Good afternoon and welcome to the continuation of the December 7th, 2021 Pearl Harbor Day, Board of Lane County Commissioners Meeting. We are now in our afternoon session and we are on Agenda Item 11, Public Works. We have a pretty interesting and packed Item 11 here, so 11A. Discussion in the matter of presenting the Draft Climate Action Plan Phase 2, Community Greenhouse Gas Mitigation Action Plan. And we have with us to present this report Dan Hurley, Director, Mark Nystrom, Lane County Climate Strategist, and Josh Proudfoot of Good Company. So please take it away.
Great. Thank you Chair Bernie. Good afternoon Commissioners. It's with great pleasure that I'm able to introduce you to our Lane County Draft Community Climate Action Plan. This is a milestone moment, setting the stage to fulfill a key action from your climate action strategy that was put forth in a resolution in February 2020. And as you mentioned, I'm joined today by Mark Nystrom, our Climate Strategist, and Josh Proudfoot from the local consulting firm, our climate consulting firm here in Eugene, Good Company. Mark and the team from Good Company have been working tirelessly for nearly the last two years to put forward your climate strategy. And so far, we've completed an internal greenhouse gas inventory. We've completed the Phase 1 of our Climate Action Plan, which was for our internal operations. We've stepped up a Climate Action Committee, and I'd like to thank Chair Bernie, who was the liaison for that committee. I know it's challenging to step up a new committee with all the details that have to happen to select committee members and establish bylaws. But that committee is now moving forward and is able to start giving recommendations to the board. And there's a key recommendation that we'll talk about, about moving the timeline up on our goal for carbon neutrality for the county. We've also completed a community-wide greenhouse gas inventory in preparation for this Phase 2 plan for the community. We've also done significant work in the next phase that will bring to you Phase 3, which was, which will be our resilience plan. And we've done that in partnership with the NAACP and Beyond Toxics and other community groups to make sure that we are hearing all voices in the community, particularly underrepresented voices. But today is all about the Phase 2 Climate Action Plan, our community plan. And this is the mechanism to move us from talk to action. We set up aggressive timelines in this plan with an ambitious goal to reach carbon neutrality by 2040, if that is the will of the board. That's quicker than what was originally put forward in our Phase 1 plan. And so we'll have a conversation about that with Mark and Josh. While climate change is a global issue that we can't solve alone, we can do our part. We can model for other communities and we can take leadership on our community. And I'm very pleased with the way that Mark and Good Company have worked through this plan involving the community, receiving input and integrating it into the plan. And so far, we've heard positive feedback and broad community support. So I hope that this plan meets your intent and that you can get behind this plan and pass it as a order and resolution when we bring this back to you after we can incorporate your input. And with that, I'll pass it to Mark so he can take you through the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and thanks Dan for that great introduction. Diana, I just wanted to let you know that Josh is still having some technical difficulties, so he's working on that. So Commissioners, if that's the case, I'll just take over the presentation. So today, I'm going to walk you through several items, so I wanted to give you a highlight, an overview. But I'd first like to start by thanking all of you for the opportunity to present the Lane County Climate Community Action Plan, or CAP. I'd like to thank the Board for their leadership in developing Board Order 2002-04-04 that established the climate program at Lane County. And like Dan, I'd like to thank Chair Bernie for all his time and knowledge that he shared as liaison to the Climate Advisory Committee. Today, we'll be reviewing the Board Order that established the climate program. Then we'll discuss the progress Lane County staff went through to develop Phase 2. And then I'll hand over the presentation to Josh if he is available. If not, I'll take it over and we'll talk about high-impact practices. And then we'll have time to talk about next steps and handle any questions. So the Board Order consisted of six objectives. In addition to the five shown on your screen, we daily strive to meet Goal Number 6, which is clear and transparent communication. The Climate Advisory Committee has been up and running since October of last year and has made some significant contributions to the work that I'm presenting today. Lane County's Climate Action Plan for Operations Phase 1 was approved in October 2020, and staff are currently working on implementation. Today, we're presenting you with the Community Greenhouse Gas Mitigation Action Plan and plan on continuing to work on this, on the implementation into the future. Lane County has also begun work on the Community Climate Resilience Plan Phase 3. We've partnered with the University of Oregon's RARE Program and brought in Cody Klein Smith as our Climate Resilience Analyst for the next year. And he has developed a work plan for moving forward. We've also been in discussion with climate-friendly economy initiatives, but admit that capacity issues due to the impacts of COVID pandemic have slowed down these efforts. Lane County began the process of developing a Community Climate Action Plan back in August 2020. Staff working with Good Company conducted a community-wide action, community-wide action plan survey to ask people how they wanted to be engaged and what topics they wanted to discuss. Staff used these results to create a work plan. Additionally, staff in Good Company conducted a community-wide greenhouse gas inventory that was presented to you a year ago. A snapshot of these emissions are displayed on the right of your screen. We found that total emissions are over 4.2 million metric tons of CO2 equivalent in 2019. Based on the work plan and inventory results, Lane County staff began a six-month-long public engagement process. Due to restrictions related to COVID, all these meetings were held virtually. First, staff held five topic-focused stakeholder meetings with utilities, cities, districts, and state agencies. Then staff held six community-focused virtual meetings, both topic and location-based. In addition, staff conducted an online open house where community members were invited to learn more about Lane County's emissions and potential actions to reduce emissions. They're also invited to fill out a survey. And these results are found in the appendix to the plan. Finally, Lane County staff held many individual community-based interviews and attended several virtual meetings. These meetings and interviews covered a wide range of topics and involved individuals and groups from across Lane County. The Climate Action Plan is based around 11 high-impact practices. High-impact practice is the term used to describe actions that are recognized as the best and most cost-effective in reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Using the latest and best available data, these actions were scaled by Good Company to determine the reduction potential on emissions in each of the categories, both now and through the year 2040. Each of the five impact practices are summarized into one to two pages. Each section also includes suggestions for what you can do at home or the office to take personal action. The goal of the report is not only to show what's possible given current or near-term technology, but also to be easily accessible to everyone in the community. However, there is a technical analysis and assumptions can be found in the appendix. At this point, I was going to turn it over to Josh, but it doesn't look like he's managed to get online. So I'll keep running you through this, through the rest of the presentation. So this graphic describes the total mitigation estimates from climate actions in 2020. This is what's known as a waterfall graph. It's coming down because we're showing that these, these actions would reduce emissions going forward. And you can see that they go from the highest impact to the lowest impact. And because so much of our emissions were related to transportation, 66% were related to transportation. Our biggest actions are related to transportation. So we looked at what would happen if we shifted our fleet community-wide from gasoline sedans and trucks to electric vehicles. Then we looked at renewable diesel. It's a currently available product. That's a drop-in substitute. We looked at that as an opportunity. And then we looked at, you can see that those two are by far the largest impact. And then an additional nine actions that all do a fairly good job. Couple of things that I want to highlight here. Green is related to transportation. The blue are related to building. Then we have a couple of other ones mixed in there. So there's electric grid decarbonization. This was received a boost from our state legislature. They're calling for emission-free grid by 2035. There's residential appliance electrification, refrigerant management, reducing the amount of refrigerant leakage, energy efficiency and conservation, mass transit, increase in ridership, edible food waste reduction, active commute, that would be telecommuting and bicycling, walking, using some sort of active way to get to work. No new natural gas infrastructure, and then the landfill anaerobic digestion. As we look at this graphic, we can see that what this allows us to do is get, using existing and current technologies, near-term technologies, we can get approximately 73% of our way to a carbon-neutral Lane County by the year 2040. This graphic describes each of the areas and how much is available now and then how much we'll need in terms of technological advances in the future. So now I'm going to walk you through each of these high-impact practices, again, starting with the largest impact and working our way down. Couple of things that I want to highlight. Each of these slides includes the amount of greenhouse gases reduced. This one, in this case, it's 15.4 million metric tons. We talk about the source, where these, these ideas came from. The down arrow represents that it's a high-impact practice. The little cluster of people represents that it was a community idea. The little cloud represents that it comes from our Climate Action Committee. We had over seven actions related to this. We highlight, in each of these slides, I highlighted three of the actions. So one of the actions we're already taking on, replacing all county-owned sedans with EVs and vehicles when vehicles reach the end of their useful life. And we're also going to look at promoting local EV manufacturing through economic and community development programs. And then we're going to convene cities and utilities to ensure that best practices in charging location plans are shared and coordinated. Renewable diesel. This is a, again, a drop-in substitute for diesel. It's got a lot of benefits that go along with it, and it's a fairly cost-neutral substitute. The actions include using R99 and all Lane County fleet vehicles. That's something that we're already doing. Investigate using fees for fossil diesel once renewable resources are readily available. We're still a ways away from having the capacity to shift everyone over to renewable diesel. And then support legislation that encourages development of Oregon-based renewable diesel manufacturing facilities. There's currently three that are coming online in the state. Grid decarbonization. We're going to support electric utilities as they build out utility-scale renewable energy projects through expedited plan reviews and supply suitable property for development. Install solar photovoltaic panels on county buildings as appropriate and support utilities as they shift to smart meters and time-of-use pricing. Residential appliance electrification gives us 1.8 million metric tons of CO2. And we have actions that include commit to no new natural gas in newly constructed county-owned buildings. Work with utilities to educate the public about the benefits of electric heat pumps and convene utilities in cities to encourage the electrification of heating and cooling and the water, heating of water using heat pumps. Mass transit, increase in ridership can see a decrease in 1.3 million metric tons of CO2. We're going to investigate a bus pass program for employees as part of an internal action. Support LTD and AlCOG when they pursue further federal funding and grants. And then convene cities and transit providers to ensure that countywide needs are being met. Edible food waste reduction. This one's right in our backyard since we're the owner of the landfill and we have a wonderful waste management team. Support food for Lane County and food producers to ensure that there's a distribution system for edible excess food. That's one of the big problems. A lot of food goes uneaten because it can't be distributed. Support cities and waste haulers in expanding curbside composting like the city of Eugene currently uses. And then convene a near-term working group to ensure coordination between cities, food producers, and manufacturers. Refrigerant management. This is a sneaky one that a lot of people don't think about, but refrigerants have thousands of times bigger impact than carbon dioxide on our atmosphere. So create no-cost opportunities for residents to responsibly dispose of old refrigerant-containing appliances. Support the creation of an equipment replacement fund for all small businesses, for small businesses serving underrepresented communities. And then convene a near-term working group with the local and state stakeholders to determine the key criteria for state oversight. Active commute and telecommuting. Support telecommuting for county employees as a climate action strategy and encourage other local governments and businesses to do the same. Support broadband expansion into rural areas and support and coordinate with school districts on their safe routes to schools program. Anaerobic digestion overall provides us 0.4 million metric tons of CO2 emissions reduction. Construct an anaerobic digestion facility at Shore Mountain Landfill and convene waste hauling agencies and cities to investigate fee structures to pay for the facility. Energy efficiency and conservation, about the same impact as anaerobic digestion. Finance and implement cost-saving energy efficiency programs such as lighting upgrades and HVAC systems within county buildings. Support utilities in educating the public about energy efficiency programs for residential, commercial, and industrial users. And support the Utilities Energy Trust of Oregon in the cities for their, in their efforts to increase energy efficiency in rentals and homes, in rentals and homes, excuse me. And then the final one on our list is natural gas infrastructure. Commit to electricity-only in newly constructed county buildings. Support cities as they push for further regulation of the expansion of natural gas. And then convene utilities and cities to decide on the best steps forwards in reducing the demand for fossil natural gas. So again, when we put these all together, the electric vehicles and renewable diesels are by far our biggest opportunities for impact. You can see that grid decarbonization with residential appliance electrification are really important as well. The rest of them are all very important. Every little piece helps. And, and as you look at the plan in total, again, we get to about 73% of those emissions. So what that means is that we still have 26% to figure out. And we're not going to do that alone. There's going to be development of new technologies. Some of the technologies that we mentioned now might be replaced by others. For example, the use of renewable diesel is an intermediary step. We're going to have technologies that allow for long-haul trucking that will include hydrogen and larger battery storage. So, so those, some of those things will, will go to the wayside as we develop new technologies. Wanted to highlight one more thing about the plan. There's five appendices available to the plan. During our virtual outreach, community members suggested many climate-friendly actions that they'd like to see Lane County take. These actions are summarized in the first appendix. Other entities in our community are already taking climate-related actions. And the state and federal government are now starting to put resources towards reducing emissions. These actions are summarized in the appendix as well. Finally, the technical analysis of the high-impact practices. So all the assumptions that went along with those last few slides and the summary of the engagement survey and public meetings can be found in the appendices as well. In terms of staff recommended next steps, the staff recommends that developing a resolution, adopting the Climate Advisory Committees and Lane County staff's recommendation for Scope 1 and Scope 2, carbon-neutral Lane County by the year 2040, that we should adopt the Community Greenhouse Gas Mitigation Action Plan that I just ran you through, and that staff bring annual updates or report cards on the progress towards this goal starting in the year 2023. And staff recommends that this resolution should be adopted as soon as possible. Any questions?
Well, I presume this is the end of the report. Dan, Mr. Hurley, did you want to say anything before I ask Commissioners if they have any questions or comments?
I had nothing to add, sure.
Commissioner? Well, oh, I was going to say, looks like you had a slam dunk, Mr. Nystrom, but I don't think... Yes, Commissioner Bozefich?
Just a quick question because there are several charts thrown up with carbon. And there's one in the actual Board Report, a table, you know, that had the actions and the various impacts in million metric tons of CO2 equivalents through 2040. And I'm, I'm getting a little confused. Is that one a cumulative 15, like for EV adoption, has 15.4 million metric tons? Is that from today through 2040, or is that an annual impact?
Yeah, Commissioner Bozefich, that's an excellent question. That's a cumulative impact through the year 2040.
Fascinating, okay, because one wildfire can, can issue 15 million metric tons of CO2.
Is that it, Commissioner?
For now. I'll let other people go first. I just wanted to clarify whether that was annual or cumulative.
Other Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Buck?
I don't necessarily have any questions. I really appreciate the report and I'm very supportive of us moving forward. You know, I was really helpful to meet with you, Mark, in advance so I could wrap my hands around any questions that may come up today. But I think we're on the right track. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Well, okay. Oh, good. Commissioner Trigger and then Vice Chair Farr.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I agree. I regret we didn't have a chance to check in one-on-one beforehand, but I reviewed materials and we have had conversations before. And I know this is sort of an update and laying some groundwork. So looking forward to when it's time to dig in a little more detail. Appreciated the note about options for remote work. I'd be really curious to hear a little more specific and granular what sort of projections are around the impacts of remote work on vehicle miles traveled. And also really appreciate the work around reducing food waste and its impact on the waste stream, both because of the health of the landfill and emissions, but also because if we're wasting usable food, whether it's usable to create compost to grow more food or actual edible food, it's better not, not to waste that. And obviously, we have that strong relationship with Food for Lane County, which really started the statewide networks, Fresh Alliance, and Food Rescue Express programs recovering usable, prepared but unserved food from restaurants, caterers, grocery stores, and so on. And I think coupling that partnership, not only with diverting food waste, but also with the refrigerant emissions work because there are dozens and dozens and dozens and dozens of volunteer-run and church-based food pantries and food distribution sites all over Lane County that are predominantly using sort of donated and older equipment, including their refrigerators. So with that one partnership, with that one organization, there's probably an awful lot of opportunity through some support with grants and so on to upgrade and improve their, their equipment, both to make their work more efficient and effective and safer for the community and to help with that, reducing the refrigerant, the output and properly recycling those, those materials. So this is a great first report for me and I'm excited to see what comes from it. Thank you so much for all your work and to the committee for all of their work. As you mentioned, the new committees are always the hardest because they want to dig into the topic area and the mission-driven work, but also have to do that foundational, just sort of nitty-gritty work of getting themselves organized and getting all their structures in place. So really extra appreciation to the inaugural team on that committee. I know we've got some big shoes to fill with some folks leaving the committee, but what a great project they get to step into with the groundwork of this plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm sorry, Mark, did you want to respond?
I was just going to, the only thing I was going to add was that we're, we're planning on doing another internal operations inventory in the fall, or in the next year. So I'm really curious to see those, those commute survey data, too. It'll be interesting to see how the COVID has impacted that because Lane County did develop or institute a remote policy.
Commissioner Trigger, did you speak too soon? You still want?
Thank you. I did. One thing I forgot to, shoot, it came and went again. Oh, I will, I will come back to it because it keeps coming, popping in and out of my brain post-lunch. Sorry. I'll be back.
Can we return to you? Okay. Vice Chair Far.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair Bernie, and thanks, Mark. I've told you before how glad I am that you're here with Lane County. You're making a significant difference. And I too am looking forward to moving forward as we address climate impacts. You know, one of the things I look forward to is being able to explain things in terms that people understand. Terms of get people on boards and oh, I know exactly what that means. For instance, I'll give an example. When I became the executive director of Food for Lane County, we weren't getting a lot of dollar donations locally. So in order to increase dollar donations, I wanted to explain to people how much they could get for a dollar. And quick math enabled us to demonstrate that at the time we were able to give about six pounds of food for every dollar donated locally. That got a lot of people on board. They understood the impact. They knew what a buck was and they knew what six pounds of foods food were. A million metric tons, cubic metric tons. That sounds like a hideously large amount. I don't think I could carry that in my pocket. But I want to be able to explain that to my five year old grandson. What is a million metric tons? What else generates? So my question then is a very simple one, or maybe an impossible one to answer. Is there a chart that tells what things? Produce one million. Cubic metric tons of of carbon annually. One thing like, let's say, Commissioner Bozovich just mentioned a wildfire and the amount there, that's. But other 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 charts that say other things like this is what a. Let's say. Lane County's, Lane County's solid waste disposal site. With, I think we have that one. That's relatively easy to get. But what about a Portland Transit District bus? Or what about five miles of highway in Beijing? You know, can we look at charts to see what where the metric tons are being generated? What specifically gives a million metric tons, which once again sounds like a hideously large amount, unfathomable amount of of weight? That that's two thousand two hundred pounds per metric ton, you know? So, simple question, can I, are the charts really available? Can I point to my five year old grandson who understands things very well? But this is what a metric million metric tons is. Sounds too, sounds too big to understand, but here's how you understand it.
Right. You know, I I don't know if there is a chart like that available. Clearly, that, you know, there's different pieces around the the interwebs. But one, one visual that I think is really helpful for me, one ton of carbon dioxide takes up about the same amount of space. As a twelve hundred square foot house. So you imagine a million houses. You know, stacked in a cube. I don't know how you picture that, but that's, that's the volume of of of. That's a volume of a ton of CO2. So it's, it's pretty, it's a huge number. So you're right. And and I didn't. You know, the, it's something that I'd be happy to look up and and try to figure out a good visual for that because you're right. It is. It's hard. It's, it's pretty interesting. Airlines are now showing you how many metric tons of CO2 each of your flights are. And if you use an app like Google, Google Flights, they'll show you which of the airplanes are more efficient, which ones are less efficient. So you can actually choose. So I think you're right. This this information, the lack of information that that people have, it makes it really hard to understand what we're doing.
And I'm concerned that people get mind boggled by the numbers and they don't realize what maybe, you know, we all talk about how many metric tons. We don't talk about how many, but we know that China, for instance, is a huge producer of of carbon dioxide. Of, you know, of the the very things that we are trying to reduce in what is seems like a relatively paltry manner compared to some of the emitters. So, you know, what does a factory in China put out compared to Lane County? You know, and and let's put it in perspective with the global picture. And then we can bring it back to perspective with what we do personally, you know, and make sure that everybody understands that while things are small. Everything we do has more impact on how the way we personally look at things and the way the impact it has on the entire globe. Because we're not going to compete with China. Whether it be in manufacturer or whether it be an output of 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 metric tons of carbon dioxide, you know, we're not going to be able to do that. So, you know, I'd love to have that. I'd love to have the numbers so that we can put it in perspective so that everybody understands that. Yes, this is, this is a big number. I mean, a mil- a million metric tons, you know, I. Food for Lane County distributes seven million tons of food a year. You're talking about a million tons. One point, you know, one, one point one times that because that's what a metric ton is, one point one. English tons. So, you know, I think that to put that in perspective, seven million tons of food all of a sudden seems like so little bit. However, we know that seven million tons of food is a great deal. So anyway, I'd love to see that, Mark, because I want to be able to explain. You all lose an ease Gomez. This is what a million metric tons is. And this is the impact it has. And by the way, let's put that in perspective with, and here are a list of other things that put out. Sometimes huge numbers, sometimes relatively small numbers like your bicycle, Ali, puts out, oh, just about none. Other than the factory in China that manufactured your bicycle.
Right, right. Yeah, and one thing I will argue for all the time is that. United States has always been excellent at innovation and developing new products and and we have a great research institute here. And China has been really good recently at taking those industries over and and building those up. And I would love to see us continue to innovate here in Lane County and. And help be part of that solution.
And as innovative as we ever will be, we simply cannot be innovative enough to make our bicycles here, you know? I think you go to any bicycle store, whomever it may be, and you'll see made in China. So and, you know, and we know that we have zero control over the their output of the of pollutants. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Couple of comments. One is that. Mark, rather than recently, I know you're, this is a little tough because Proudfoot was supposed to be here. I have, I also, like Commissioner Bozovich, have questions about calculations and methodology. And I know that they can respond to those a little better than you can. But I want to, I'm going to put a few questions to you. But in terms of Vice Chair Far's comments, we do have to demystify this. Period. It has to be demystified. People need to understand. I, my, one of my favorite quotes is Albert Einstein. If you don't know something well enough to explain it to a six year old child, you don't know it well.
So. By the way, made in China.
Commissioner Far just took all the wind from my sails. The other question, you know, if you can't answer, please don't. But. Do you think this plan is realistic? Number one, is it realistic? Is it doable?
Yes.
Do you think, will it, will it create net new jobs?
Yes.
And do you think, and and in your mind, I have an answer to this, but is it business friendly?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
And could you explain why you answered yes to the last two?
Yeah, yeah, sure. We're moving into an. Our economy is shifting and I know that Vice Chair Far mentioned China many times. We're gonna, like, if we don't manufacture, if we don't innovate, if we don't create. Other countries are going to be looking to China for their solutions. And yes, they're using a lot of of coal right now. They they burn a lot of coal and and our products, the stuff we buy, this phone that I have here. They're dependent on, on, yeah, everything that we buy is dependent on their manufacturing. But they also see a business opportunity and so they're developing solar faster than we are. They're, they're developed, well, we don't develop any solar. We invented solar panels, we being the United States. They make them all now. All the, all the wind turbine technology is being made in in China.
I'm talking about Lane County. Right, China.
I'm saying that this is the future of our economy is is moving forward with green technology. And with clean energy. And so we have the opportunity to innovate here in Lane County. One of the great things about renewable diesel, it's it's made in the United States. There's no reason why we can't help innovate that and move that forward. So, yeah, and then when you get into things like installing solar. Installing all these charging stations and, you know, moving forward on all these things, there's business opportunities there.
Okay. Wait, I'm sorry. I know I'm cutting you short, but just have a bunch more questions. I know. When. You mentioned to Commissioner Bozovich that these were cumulative totals, but what is that assuming? Like, take any one of those. Is that assuming X percent of cars or or trucks? And what is that percentage? I mean, you have a chart year by year. Is that a good company question? Because I assume there's an ideology there.
Yeah, that's all in that appendix that technical memo. We didn't put it, we intentionally did not put that in the body of the document because we wanted this to be an accessible document for everyone. But for people like you who have these technical questions, it's all spelled out in the.
Thank you. In the olden days, when I had a clean energy, commercial, and industrial retrofit company, Commissioner Far, we would always identify. The amount of carbon that was mitigated by the retrofit. And we'd always put it in terms of this is the same as the equivalent of taking this many cars off the road. Or the equivalent of planting this many trees. And we would always have those graphs on every project. And anytime you went into any building that we that we and then and others besides ourselves did. There would be a monitor in the lobby of the building and people could interact with it. So they could literally see in the, in solar projects, energy being made, like literally. And they could, they could look at different building parts. I would also, Mark, like to suggest, there are a lot of jobs attached to these industries. They're not just industries of the future. The Bureau of Labor Statistics. Two years ago, I'm just going to quote my source, because I know there's a commissioner that's going to follow up and double check. Identified the three fastest growing jobs in the United States that paid well. Number one, windmill technicians. Number two, solar installers and and number three, although I don't know how well this paid home health aides. I think we can add to that list childcare workers and variety of healthcare. So these are not just jobs of the future. These are jobs right now. There are also construction jobs. You and I have talked and and we've discussed how there are programs like Property Says Clean Energy that that create. A plethora of home heating, air conditioning, solar installing, you know. Energy efficiency, I mean, their contractor jobs is what they are. And not union contractor jobs usually when we talk residential. I think you and I also discussed, can the county ever perhaps look at partnerships with local banks and savings institutions and buy down interest rates? For the installation of car chargers or or buy down loan rates for the purchase of electric cars. So there's a whole bunch of stuff. I support the direction of this. As Commissioner Trigger mentioned, I'm one of those that, as you know, that's frustrated as hell with the advisory body processing. You know, getting our feet on the ground and and getting moving. I'm, I'm wanting to move. I think there are so many. Things that are not in this report that that we can, but we can build from it and convene. And I want to give my men, my board members an example, and then I know there's others that want to speak. I've worked with several of the local electrical unions in the state. And they are right, are now considering from their trust funds, their pension trust funds. Blocks of twenty five million dollars per chunk of dollars to finance. Commercial and residential solar retrofits. Obviously, it's their members' money. So what their requirement is going to be is that their members are working on those jobs. But nonetheless, it becomes new financing for moving in this direction. And I, and I think we've only scratched the surface. And I do agree with you. That as we look at carbon emissions and we look at local, more and more and more local sourcing. And local businesses and less international travel and less of those tanker tanker cargo things out there. We're also going to find a whole cottage of industries in this space that will spur economic development. So. Don't agree with everything. Agree with the plan. Appreciate you're doing it. Appreciate moving forward. And support the request to. To have commissioners adopt a resolution for a carbon neutral Lane County by twenty forty. I'm not saying we can get there, but I'm saying if we don't shoot for the stars, we won't get to the top of the hill and we got to have goals. Thank you, Mark. Other commissioners? I knew it. Yes, sir, Commissioner Bozovich.
And right at that moment, my, my. Mouse died and I couldn't get my cursor over to the mute button. Because the battery's failing. Interesting thing to 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 have happen while we're talking about this. You know, it's fascinating to me. How many of the tactics in this plan were things that Lane County was already doing? And and were part of other plans. You know, some of our methane reduction or and our food waste management was part of our solid waste master plan. The work on energy efficiency in our buildings has been ongoing through our facilities and and master planning efforts there. Our our vehicle replacements with lower emission vehicles has been going on for years. It didn't take this plan to start those efforts. That said, just to kind of answer Commissioner Far a little bit. Our atmosphere weighs approximately five point five quadrillion metric tons. Of that, about two hundred and twenty trillion metric tons is CO2. The annual production of CO2 from human emissions is about thirty five billion metric tons. So you start, you're working down orders of magnitude. And then when you get down to what we're talking about here over the next nineteen years. Is in the, you know. Million, you know, million metric tons range, fifteen million, twelve point five million. So you can see how much, how tiny that is compared to that twenty, two hundred and twenty trillion cubic metric tons in the atmosphere. I'm really concerned because this plan does not really take much into consideration about the impacts it's going to have on our electric grid. And issues about peaking and, you know, I've mentioned the duck graph to people before. Much of these tactics, I think, are going to, are going to have problems there. As well as the heavy dependence on biodiesel and the competition of arable land between growing fuel versus growing food. All of that's not taken into account, but that, you know. That just is. Part of the issues about this. The biggest thing is any plan that's trying to address CO2 emissions. And does not address active management forced wildfire prevention. Isn't addressing the issue in Oregon at all. In twenty twenty, our wildfire CO2 emissions exceeded the entire year. Of power related CO2 and transportation related CO2 in the state of Oregon. A single wildfire can have over fifteen million metric ton, million metric tons of CO2 emitted. If we're not involved in helping our public lands become more resilient to wildfire. Having active management, which includes harvest, which by the way, supplies affordable building materials for affordable housing. You know, we built up a million houses worth of lumber, burnt up, I'm sorry, a million houses worth of lumber in twenty twenty. You know, that could be a lot of affordable housing units. We need to think about how we can best manage our forest if we're going to seriously try and reduce our carbon footprint. And this plan fails to address that in any way.
Anyone else? Mark, did you want to respond to that or no?
I could respond.
Yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner, I would agree. This this plan ideally would address forest practices. That is an issue that our climate advisory committee is working on. They have stepped up a subcommittee to start working on that to bring us some policy recommendations. So so I would expect that in the future as we get into next year. We will have a report back from the Climate Advisory Committee. I think it's in January. So we'll start hearing some recommendations from them, but there will be some specifics around forest management practices. And couldn't agree more. And we we do need to do things to prevent wildfire in our our community because of those factors. I would also just note that climate change exacerbates that by having longer, drier summers, putting us at at larger risk for wildfires. With regard to the electric piece, coordination with other entities is a big part of this plan. There are there are pieces that we take direction, direct action on, and then there are pieces where we are the convener. And so with the those electric actions, we will be a convener and be working with the utilities as we move forward with this plan.
Thank you.
Can I just follow up? My only request is that as you look at forest management, that any papers that come from law at all out of OSU be taken out of the equation. Those, the work that that Professor Law has done has been highly debunked. It's junk science and should not be the basis of any sort of 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 scientific strategies going forward.
Commissioners, anyone else that wants to speak, please let us know. I'm going to fill the void, though, what I've heard, oh, no void yet to fill, Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks again, Mark, you know, one of the great values of this is that we are teaching our five year old grandchildren exactly what they can personally do. Now, while at the same time, we we need to make sure that we're not mythologizing them, thinking that they can personally prevent wildfires, however, their actions can cause other people to act the same way. And if at some point with if we save fifteen million metric tons on that one item, I'm not sure what item it was. And we talk one hundred other jurisdictions, the size of ours, we as a leader, we multiply that by a hundred, then we've we've had some kind of an impact. Still tiny compared to the output of other nations and, you know, when we take into account that only one solar manufacturing panel manufacturer is in the United States, the rest are overseas where we have zero control over, once again, their manufacturing, how they how they produce and how they waste. But understanding that our efforts, while absolutely being geared toward our personal habits and our personal contributions, we have to understand that we have to do far more than just buy an electric car, we have to do far more than ride our bicycle, because all of those things have an impact on the manufacturing, on the the manufacturing chain. And and a lot of times, a lot of the effort that we have to place is on how do we bring the manufacturing back to the United States where we do have more than just a modicum of control of how we manufacture? And how do we make it so that the US solar panels are not twenty five percent more costly than the ones made overseas? You know, how do we do all of these things in conjunction with a climate action plan that really will have a ultimately a far greater impact than what we can do in Lane County? Now, well, continue to do what we can do in Lane County, of course, absolutely, of course. But in the meantime, the big producers, where things are really, really pumping junk into the atmosphere, we're doing nothing about it because we're buying their bikes, we're buying their computers, we're buying their solar panels.
I I really appreciate your comments, Vice Chair Farr, everything so relates to everything else. Mark, if I may, and Dan, I'm I'm hearing several things. One, I'm hearing general support for continuing to move forward. I'm also hearing it's probably good to identify what practices the county already was engaged in and how this work is going to amplify that if it is. I think it's also good to talk about areas, as Mr. Hurley mentioned, that are outside of our control, but that but that we're but that we're trying to support or or empower. My understanding and speaking with Mr. Proudfoot was all the municipal utilities in Lane County purchase renewable energy together, clean energy, and that they're purchasing as such, I think he told me the year was by twenty thirty four, there will be zero carbon emissions from the energy portfolio offered by all the MOUs or municipal owned utilities in Lane County. So the these kinds of things make sense. And I think that that it also, I'm glad Mr. Early you meant you responded because Short Mountain, which is this is a big problem in terms of emissions and forest management, which I mean, Commissioner Bosovic has a a good point, are things that this body has, so they would be addressing, and I know that people have been reached out to and they're going to be hearing a lot about that. So unless any other commissioners have any other statements, I would, do you? I would request, Dan, what would you, do you have what you need from this? Was this just discussion? Do you want any direction from the board at this time?
Chair, this was just discussion at this point to get your input while the report's still in draft form. We can take some of those suggestions you gave to us today to, you know, talk about what is a million metric tons and try to put some of this in perspective with some comparisons, I think that'd be an easy thing we could add. We can also talk about some of the actions that the county was already doing and how this is a continuation of that pretty easily. If there's anything else that you would like to see before we bring this back to you, this would be the opportunity here.
Yes, Commissioner Bosovic.
So things I'd like to see. Electric vehicle charging during peak hour impacts on the grid. I'd like to see competition for arable land for renewable diesel products and cost of food. Because, you know, most of these things are going to generate additional costs and inflation in our in our economy. And inflation hurts the poor the most, so it's amazing that some of these things are getting high equity scores. You know, when they talk about residential appliance electrification and and no new natural gas, et cetera. Our biggest peaking requirement in our grid right now is the morning heating peak in the winter time. So I kind of would like I'd like to understand the impacts to the grid on those also. Our electric grid in this country is in bad shape as it is. And it's not well maintained. And everyone saw that the impacts of some of that in the twenty twenty wildfire season, when we had it an unusual east wind event and what it did for fire starts due to our grid. California's already seen brownouts and blackouts due to peak demand issues. That's what I would really like to understand is how each one of these impacts the stability of our electric grid and our ability to sustain that electric grid. Because I see a lot of these, from my experience working for an electric utility, destabilizing to our system in this country. And and I I just have a real concern about that. And I and I won't get into a long discussion about economics here. But one of the reasons why wind turbine and solar stuff is is moving is because it's subsidized and we're causing inflation with the money we're printing to subsidize it.
I I agree with you, Commissioner, let's not get into that, you've spoken three times on this, some commissioners only once. Can you wrap it up with anything else you want to see rather than the rationale?
No, I think I got the wannases in there, which is really, I I'm really concerned about how this impacts our electric grid. And 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 the strategies are not taking that into account at all.
Other, thank you, sir, other other commissioners wannases? Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Chair, one of the things that really intrigues me about where we're moving forward with this is how it impacts or relates to economic development, especially in our rural areas of the county, given that they have the land available for a lot of clean energy jobs. So on the economic development angle of this, which I'm sure you're you're, you will further develop as you go along with the committee work, I'd really like to see what opportunities it creates in, you know, specific types of industries that could be supported through, you know, this this type of, you know, not only, I I was going to say development, but we're not developing anything here, you know, we're trying to find some policy guidelines that we would be able to, you know, really put our energy behind, maybe even from a legislative standpoint as well. And how that would actually open up broader green energy jobs here in the county. I'm not sure how far down the road you are in that. But that's something I'll be keeping an eye on out for.
Commissioner, if I may. Yeah, thank you for that, yeah, we we definitely need to do more work on that. But one of the the valuable aspects of having a plan that's been endorsed by the Board of Commissioners, the federal government and the in the bipartisan transportation or infrastructure bill, excuse me, they passed an additional five hundred and fifty billion dollars worth of grants that are going to be coming out. And having a plan in place, even if we were already doing some of the electrification and even if we were doing some of the the other work around facilities improvement, having a plan in place allows us to demonstrate that we're thinking about this and that we're active and it it does elevate our our grant process as we approach this kind of tidal wave of federal dollars that are going to be coming out. Other commissioners?
Well, I I must say that we are exactly right on time. And Commissioner Buck provided, I think, the perfect segue to our next agenda item, where we go from planning to industry that's organizing within this space. So Mr. Nice, Mr. Hurley, thank you very much. I think you got what you needed and we look forward to a plan that, to the degree possible, integrates input from commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was getting ready to read the next agenda item, I'm starting to see all these familiar faces, okay. Item eleven B, discussion. Now, think about the discussion we just had, in the matter of exploring mixed waste processing as a potential solution to meet Lane County's solid waste recovery goals and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And with us today are Dan Hurley again, Jeff Orlandini, Waste Management Division Manager, Angie Marzano, Waste Reduction Supervisor, Eric Herbert, who I've not yet had the opportunity to meet, President of Bulk Handling, and Steve Miller, who I absolutely have, Bulk Handling Systems. We're estimating an hour and a half discussion and presentation. And Dan, if you'd kick it off, we look forward to hearing what y'all have to say.
Certainly, thank you, Chair. Yes, very excited to have Steve Miller here today and Eric Herbert from Bulk Handling Systems or PHS, as requested by the board back at the end of October. I'm also joined by Jeff Orlandini, our Waste Management Division Manager, and Angie Marzano, our Waste Reduction Specialist. And Bulk Handling Systems is a global leader in waste processing. And we are fortunate to have them here in our community, they're headquartered in Eugene, but they provide waste processing systems all around the the world. And we'll be talking about what that means and what these types of systems are. We have a very strong solid waste and recycling infrastructure here in Lane County systems and partners we work with. We have the highest recovery rate in the state and we're very proud of that, fifty three percent. Meaning of all the waste generated, maybe I have that wrong. I see Andy shaking her head, somewhere around fifty three percent. Of all the waste generated, we recover that amount of material and keep it out of the landfill. And while we're proud of that, it's far from our goal, we're trying to get to sixty three percent by twenty twenty five. And I would love to see us get well over ninety percent as some communities in California do with waste processing systems. And so as we discussed in the last presentation, this matters because Short Mountain landfill is the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions from county operations. It's the second largest stationary source of greenhouse gas emissions in the county behind international paper. And while many community community members are are, you know, rightly concerned about having to dispose of plastics into the landfill and about the dangers of polystyrene, of a much larger concern is the food waste that we dispose of into the landfill. It's the single largest category of waste that's disposed at the landfill and it creates long term environmental harm. So as food waste and other organics degrade in the landfill, they degrade anaerobically, meaning that they produce methane, which is much more harmful in the atmosphere than carbon dioxide. And it also produces a wastewater we call leachate. And so we don't pay the true cost of waste right now. We put that on future generations because of these emissions and this leachate that will need to be handled for decades as this organic waste decomposes. And, you know, I think our children, our grandchildren will will look back at burying waste and think, you know, what a ridiculous thing to do, when we could be pulling that material out and and doing better things with it. I believe that waste processing is the future of materials management. And I've been able to see it at work, I've traveled down to California as as has Jeff, as has Chair Bernie, to to view some of these systems, some bulk handles, bulk handling installations around San Jose. And these systems work, you know, they pull valuable materials out of the landfill and put those to work for other, you know, circular economy, green jobs. It extends the life of the landfill. It reduces emissions. And when coupled with anaerobic digestion, you know, putting these organics into a facility that's that's contained and can capture the methane, then it can produce biogas for fuel or green power. And so we're coming to you today at your request to talk about mixed waste processing and bulk handling systems. And because we are about to issue a request for proposals for waste processing in the county. And this is a great opportunity for the board to learn what this means before we come to you to make decisions on how to move forward. And so I'll be followed by Jeff, we'll put this into context with the waste we've been, with the work we've been doing to build our solid waste master plan and some of the other studies we're doing around this. And then Angie will talk about some big changes that have happened at the state level with some legislation around extended producer responsibility that could provide dollars for a project like this. And then we'll be followed by bulk handling systems that will talk about these technologies of waste processing. So with that, I'll pass to Jeff, thank you.
Great, thank you, everyone, and my part hopefully will be the quickest part because I get to go over kind of what we've done since two thousand four, real, two thousand fourteen until now to kind of set us up. And Angie's going to try to take more of our time to discuss some of the ramifications and implementation of the new EPR policies that the the state has enacted. And so, again, I'll I'll try to be as as brief as I can because most of this should should be understood already, so the outline for of what we want to talk about is in front of you. And again, we're just trying to tee up how we've gotten to where we've at. And so where we're at, these are the the six things that we'll discuss, again, with the the focus really being on those items four through six there. This is a timeline with blue items on the top being kind of major milestones. And then the orange kind of being more of the work that we have completed. And so if it looks a little busy, it's because we've been very busy for the the last few years here. And so we'll start with our system wide analysis, some of you will remember that, you know, around two thousand fourteen, we realized that we had some issues that we wanted to take care of, namely being about a one and a half million dollar operational budget gap over a two year period. We wanted to make sure that we had appropriate money set aside for landfill cost, future closure, post closure, as well as building, you know, money set aside to build those landfill cells. Wanted to stay, you know, modern and and up with current trends in the waste industry. And then really wanted to make sure we could achieve our ambitious recovery goal, which we'll we'll get into in a moment. And so this kind of shows you the process that we use there and some commissioners who are here today were there then and remember that this resulted in a fee increase and kind of coming back to the board every year to make sure that we're doing smaller increases to to keep in line with what we needed, as well as some other initiatives like, you know, remodeling the Florence Transfer Station, starting to look at other transfer stations and make them more efficient and modernize those. And so we then, from there, went right into our solid waste management planning, also sometimes called the solid waste master plan. And so really, this again was to help us find ways to to reach that ambitious sixty three percent recovery goal. This is a plan that was designed to go through twenty twenty five. We do know if you look at those focus areas on the right, those five areas that is, as we try to look at all those things, some of these are going to take us beyond twenty twenty five. But these are kind of our our guiding light focus areas for the division. And each of those has a responsible party, a target date and metrics for measuring success. And then we developed staff work plans around these focus areas as well. As we get to that recovery goal, so this is something that we tout a lot about, kind of back to some earlier conversation around what we can tell our our younger generation, you know, my kids and and Christopher Farr's grandchild, you know, that we want to hit this sixty three percent recovery rate, it's an ambitious goal, it's one that we were tasked with setting in twenty fifteen as part of the updated to the Opportunity Recycle Act. We chose a goal that was right in line with Portland. We chose a goal that was right in line with Portland Metro Wayshed and Marion Counties, which are two that we typically are able to keep up with. But it was very ambitious and we did that on purpose because we wanted to make sure that we are continuing to really try to push forward and get Lane County where it needed to be. We are happy that we have the the highest recovery rate in the state, but it's currently, you know, about eight percentage points lower than sixty-three. So we need to find the next big thing to to get us up to that sixty-three percent. This is just a graph that shows for the entire state of Oregon is what you're looking at here. It's kind of, you know, waste disposed. So that that green line is going to show you the amount of waste that each person in Oregon will produce. And then what you can see with the orange is what is currently being disposed of in terms of landfill. And then the bottom line there is what is being recovered. And so the recovery and disposal numbers should add up. Those pounds should add up to the blue line. The good news is that Lane County currently is trending a little bit higher than this in terms of the recovery. So in twenty nineteen, Lane County generated almost six hundred and twenty-nine thousand tons of municipal solid waste, which was an increase of a little over five percent over the year before. It did, it equates to a per capita generation of three thousand three hundred and nineteen pounds per person or about nine point one pounds per day. And so that's a lot of waste per day. And I want to remind folks that when we think of waste, it's not just what's going in the landfills. It's everything people throw out, whether that's going in a recycling bin or a yard debris bin or a garbage bin. These are all all waste. I think that's hugely important when we talk about things like food waste. Just because food is going to an anaerobic digestion system or maybe to a composting system doesn't mean we should feel good about wasting food if that's food that could have been consumed. That that's what we want to have happen with that. And so you can see that, you know, these rates kind of, you know, they they do fluctuate a bit. And I I would let folks know that since COVID, you know, they certainly aren't going down. What we've seen is the the lower rates of disposal maybe by businesses and in particular restaurants at the start of the pandemic. We saw equal or higher rates going up in individuals and in people's residences, which actually kind of shows us the importance of people taking individual action to help with their waste consumption. This will show you what Lane County's waste composition looks like. This is as of twenty sixteen, which was the last time that we had a comprehensive waste composition study conducted. We will have another one that will be conducted this spring and summer. And so hopefully a year from now, we'll have updated numbers to compare to with this. Although based on what we've kind of seen anecdotally, we don't think percentage-wise, things have changed a whole lot. And just wanted to remind everyone that when we talk about waste, you know, this is going to be by tonnage. And, you know, so heavier items are going to take up a larger percentage. And we know that food and other organics way more. And as you can see, that all food, all wood, and yard debris, those three organic categories are the the majority of our waste stream in terms of if you can pick things to to take out, those are combined the the largest areas and kind of show folks why we we do focus on these organics. You just spent a good amount of time talking about the Climate Action Plan, and so we won't belabor that point. This is something that's been shown a couple of times before and it shows you that the landfill is the largest county-controlled emitter of of those greenhouse gases. And then our our next one is that pie chart that shows that if you include the landfill, the the pie chart on the left shows you that percentage. If you take the landfill out of the equation, you get that pie graph on the right. So it kind of shows that if you weren't, if the if the landfill was not a county-operated and owned landfill, then the the graph on the right would be kind of more in line with what we would see. But we do know that the landfill is the largest contributor to the the greenhouse gases. And so it's obviously a focal point for both our our division's, you know, recovery goal aspirations as well as for climate action. And so we get into anaerobic digestion. So this is something we're working on right now. We're very excited about. We hired HDR in May of twenty-one to begin our AD anaerobic digestion feasibility study after an exhaustive competitive process. The study analyzes our current feedstock, the financial benefits, costs, and design considerations for an AD system. The study will be included in our larger effort to solicit responses to a mixed waste processing RFP that we'll discuss in a little while. But it also allows us to, independent of that, look at, you know, do, you know, the ability to go and and have an anaerobic digester regardless of of what may or may not kind of come to town in terms of mixed waste processing. And we were excited to work with our local partners who you'll hear from in a little while, Bulk Handling Systems, and also helping with determining how to get these organics out of our waste stream without having major changes to the current way that we do collect waste from the the general public and our transfer stations. And so with that, I would like to hand over the the next few slides to Angie Marzano, who I think you've all met a couple of times, who will go over the new and exciting Recycling Modernization Act of twenty twenty-one. Angie?
Good afternoon, Board of Commissioners and Chair. So not only have we been hard at work, our partners across the state, including DEQ and other stakeholders, have really been hitting the ground running and this legislation is is testament to that. So the Plastic Pollution and Recycling Modernization Act of twenty twenty-one or Senate Bill five eighty-two passed during this last twenty twenty-one legislative session. The bill was signed into law in August and will go into effect January first, twenty twenty-two. The intent of the law is to modernize our decades-old recycling systems. The goal of the initial framework was to optimize environmental benefits, create a more resilient system, and restore a lot of that public trust that's been lost in our recycling system. I've been asked today to present on an overview of what the law does and then discuss implementations and timelines. So first, for a little bit of context, I want to mention that the Recycling Modernization Act is aligned with the Oregon Department of Environmental Qualities twenty fifty vision for materials management. Sarah Grimm, who was formerly in Waste Management, retired in May. She sat on that recycling steering committee responsible for drafting the framework for this bill. The overarching framework supports Lane County's approach to lifecycle thinking and prioritizes the environmental and social benefits of recycling activities. The Recycling Modernization Act creates a shared responsibility recycling system that builds on the parts of Oregon's recycling programs that work really well and fills in gaps where it desperately needs improvements. It includes elements of a framework called Extended Producer Responsibility, and it requires producers of packaging, paper products, and packaging, plastic products to be accountable for the responsible management of their products for the first time. So this is really exciting. Next slide. From a high-level perspective, these are key challenges in today's recycling system and how the new law addresses this. To reduce public confusion, the new law provides more public education and creates one statewide recycling collection list. And it improves inequities throughout the state and in the county, especially for residents living in apartments and rural community members. To address a lack of producer funding to support recycling programs and historically unstable and volatile recycling markets, it creates, it requires that producers share responsibility with local governments and ratepayers and help stabilize costs to take some of that volatility off of local governments and ratepayer shoulders. To address the trend in Oregon of creating more garbage and recycling less over time, as Mr. Orlandini spoke about in an earlier slide, the legislation will increase the quality and the quantity of recycling as it becomes more accessible and easier to recycle across the state. It creates incentives to use fewer materials and it has significant funding for reuse and prevention of waste at the source. And where we currently have no guarantee of recycled, of responsible recycling, the new law requires producers and recycling processors to ensure that material collected for recycling is actually recycled and in ways that protect the environment and the health and human health. Next slide, please. So how will this all work? Here's how the Recycling Modernization Act achieves those solutions and more. Producers of covered products, which include packaging, printed paper, and food service ware, will join and make payments to a producer responsibility organization, or PRO, as we call it. The PRO will fund necessary upgrades and perform other functions that will make Oregon's recycling programs more convenient, accessible, and responsible. The Recycling Modernization Act is a shared responsibility model. The producers are fully responsible for some defined elements and share in the responsibility for carrying out many of the others. Producer costs will be scaled on what materials they use and how much they sell their products into Oregon. There are exemptions for small businesses, nonprofits, schools, and others that qualify. There are also exemptions on materials covered by the bottle bill, on-farm packaging, industrial packaging, medicines, and more. Producer support will make it possible to create a new statewide recycling collection list that will make recycling programs consistent across the state and, more importantly, in Lane County. Local governments will maintain their role of overseeing collection and education in their communities but take on new roles to expand collection services and carry out contamination reduction programs and educational services. Materials will be processed at facilities that meet new performance standards before being sold to end markets that can handle the materials responsibly. DEQ will oversee the recycling system and hold producers and other parties accountable where necessary. A new advisory council made up of a range of stakeholders will review important system elements and advise DEQ and the PROs. Now let's get into the finer details of how the future system will work. Next slide, please. First, let's look at how the new law will improve existing recycling programs. This includes recycling services provided by local governments, namely the on-rout and curbside collection of commingled recyclings from household and businesses as well as as well as drop-off depots at solid waste transfer stations. To update these these existing programs, the new law creates several improvements. There's a process whereby the state will establish one uniform statewide list of recyclable items to make recycling easier and clearer for everyone, including people who speak languages other than English, for one. People in multifamily apartment buildings, secondarily. The Oregon Recycling System Advisory Council, which I mentioned earlier, will create this list and consider technological, environmental, economic, and social factors. Local governments like Lane County will be required to collect the materials on that list in City of Eugene and other cities throughout the county. The PROs will pay the cost of transporting recyclables more than fifty miles to a processing facility or in-market. So this uniform statewide list, coupled with these reimbursements for transportation costs, will expand and better meet the needs of underserved people across the state and the county. Local governments that are interested in expanding collection services may make use of the producer funding for startup costs such as trucks and containers as well as ongoing costs for operating new or expanded depots. Local governments will also be required to ensure that multifamily communities like apartment buildings receive adequate service and that new construction and significant remodels have adequate adequate space for containers, which currently a lot of construction projects don't don't have that space. Local governments will also implement education and outreach programs funded by producers to reduce contamination by households and businesses. DEQ will study and pilot these these interventions and create a list of tested and cost-effective methods for local governments to work from. DEQ will permit or certify the audit processing facilities that sort our recyclables, requiring them to meet new performance standards. These include standards for sorting quality, managing contamination, reporting on final destination of materials, and paying workers a living wage for and providing supportive benefits. PROs will pay processing facilities two fees, one to offset the cost of removing contamination and one to offset the cost of meeting new performance standards and to absorb some of the volatility that we've seen in the commodity markets today. Next slide, please, Jeff. Now let's look at a few other new services and requirements of producers and the parts where they will have greater operational responsibilities. Along with that statewide collection list I met, I mentioned, the state will also name some additional hard-to-recycle materials for which the PROs are required to set up or enhance recycling services. They will be required to meet collection and access standards of these materials. The purpose of this additional requirement is to capture items that make sense to recycle but don't belong in our commingled recycling system. Filmed plastics is a perfect example. It's highly recyclable but very difficult to collect in curbside programs because it becomes a major contaminant. In tandem with that, the bill contains progressively increasing and enforceable recycling goals for plastic packaging, requiring producers to recycle up to fifty percent by the year twenty forty. The PROs will also work with other system participants to ensure that all materials collected for recycling, whether collected through the public commingled system or through one of these supplemental PRO-run services, are recycled at responsible end markets. This will help and assure that people, that that this will help and assure the people of Oregon and us that these materials are actually being recycled in an environmentally responsible way. As you can see, this new law creates a truly shared responsibility approach where all recycling system participants have clear and designed roles. More importantly, it shares financial obligations between producers and ratepayers and protects ratepayers from higher costs that may result from these improvements. Next slide, Jeff. The new law also addresses some other important elements of recycling and the lifecycle impacts of packaging. Over the next several years of implementation, DEQ will conduct a number of studies and will report back to the legislator legislature about whether PRO obligations should also address issues including multifamily recycling conditions, equity in the recycling system, litter and marine debris, and how compostable packaging is handled. The legislation also repeals the current requirement that the chasing arrow, which we all know, be stamped on all rigid plastic packaging and creates a Truth in Labeling Task Force, which will study the issue of of misleading labeling and provide a report back to the twenty twenty-third, twenty twenty-three legislature. The new law prioritizes, as mentioned before, a reduction in lifecycle impacts of packaging and requires that the largest twenty-five producers, the largest, requires the twenty-five largest producers conduct lifecycle assessments of some of their products and share that information publicly. And it requires PROs to set their membership fees in a way that incentivizes more sustainable product design. Lastly, producers will also fund programs that reduce environmental impacts of covered products through means other than recycling such as waste prevention and reuse. Last slide, please. So key dates for implementation. This, as you can imagine, is a multi-year process of planning, research, implementing, and reporting. We have approximately four years to conduct a large amount of foundational work before the first PRO program plans are implemented in July twenty twenty-five, including studies, rulemakings, pilot testing, creation of new permitting and certification programs, and more. On January one, twenty twenty-two, the law will go into effect. The advisory council will be appointed and begin meeting quarterly, and the Truth in Labeling Task Force report is due in June of twenty twenty-two. In twenty twenty-three, the first rulemaking takes place. DEQ's statewide needs assessment of local government's interests and expansion of collection services is due no later than July one, twenty twenty-two. DEQ will also conduct pilot projects for contamination reduction and studies for producer-related fees. DEQ will also conduct pilot projects for contamination reduction and studies for producer-related fees. Then by July 1, 2025, individual producers must join a PRO. PROs must be able to implement an approved program plan, and by that date, local governments will implement changes to the collection programs, such as collecting the statewide list, for example. And finally, recycling processing facilities must obtain a permit or certification by that date. More details related to the implementation will be available at the first of the year. There is a stakeholder interest form on DEQ's website where stakeholders, interested parties, residents of Lane County can express interest for opportunities, ways to engage. For more information related to this specifically, you can go to wwwrecyclingact.oregon.gov. And then we also intend on having information on our website about this process and implementation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Angie. And so I'll finish up our portion of the presentation with kind of the big next step for us. This is kind of what everything's culminating in, is this mixed-waste processing RFP. And so this RFP is set to go out in early 2022 with the goal that we get it back sometime in the spring. It'll take a little while for folks to be able to wade through this and determine if they can respond to this. So we're seeking proposals that are pertaining to the design, build, and operation of a new recovery facility in Lane County. The request will ask for conceptual facility designs, including planning-level capital and per-ton operating costs, with the objective of identifying qualifying firms capable of developing a facility for increasing recovery of targeted materials. The RFP will highlight interest in organic materials processing, mixed-waste processing, and construction and demolition processing, but also allow for other technologies that can assist the county in meeting or exceeding the diversion goal of 63%. And so before we take more questions, which I'm sure you'll have around that RFP and our next steps, to round this out and really give you a good idea of what these systems can look like, and yes, a few of us have been lucky enough to go out and see these in action, we have our friends from Bulk Handling Services, sorry, to go over their systems and what they offer and how this can all come together and probably give you a pretty good idea of some of the systems that we would see being proposed in Lane County through this RFP process. So, Diana, if you want to switch the presenter back over to Steve, I think Steve and Eric, you can take it from here.
Very good.
Chair, we can't hear you.
Okay, are you able to see my screen?
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Steve. I was going to give you a little intro, but I took all my time being muted.
You know, if you're going to say nice things, I should give you the opportunity to do that.
I am going to say nice things. This board might remember, but I was fortunate enough to go with folks down to see some of the systems. I didn't know whose systems they were. And when I looked at them and I realized that we have, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but the fourth, one of the fourth-largest manufacturer of these kinds of waste energy and industrial recycling systems, the kinds of jobs that can be created through them, the quantitative impacts they make on greenhouse gas reduction, blah, 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 blah. And then I learned that some of the tremendous expertise was in our own community that launched a series of discussions around a vision. And Steve Miller, he's consulted our senators to the United States Senate. He's consulted our entire federal delegation on this stuff. He's a huge resource, and I'm just delighted you could be here and share a little. Steve, thank you.
Great. Well, thanks for that introduction. I'm glad I released the floor. So, thank you. Look, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and talk with you. Joining me is Eric Herbert, who's the president of the company, Bulk Handling Systems. And we prepared a slide deck to talk a little bit about us and so you have an understanding of who we are, an idea of systems in general that deal with solid waste and some of the possibilities. We have a short video to kind of let you see some of this so you can get an idea of what it all looks like and then a conception of what we would do here in Lane County. And then, of course, feel free to answer or to ask any questions that you might have. I thought I was showing my deck. Do I need to do this again?
You're showing.
Oh, okay. All right, very good. And I will add, I appreciate all of the discussion about "Made in America" and "Made in Lane County." And so when you think about our company, we're really a group of brands and business units, some of which we started ourselves, some of which we acquired over time. The holding for it is here in Eugene. We have some 200 employees based here, where we design, engineer, manufacture, install, service, and support systems all around waste in its many forms. And we do this all over the world. And so there are virtually no countries where we are. There are a few, but we have a global footprint. We do quite a lot in municipal solid waste, but as well, other activity. The different brands that we have, BHS, we manufacture here, our screening, conveyors, structural support, and all of the overall engineering is done. Max AI is a brand that we've developed using artificial intelligence and robotics to take the place of people who stand on sort lines and hand-pick waste. Whenever you see someone doing that, be assured it is the worst job in the world. Very difficult not only to do, but also to staff and, you know, very high turnover, high cost, that sort of thing, and high injury rates. So we've developed a way to replace that using robotics. NiHOT is our air technology company based in Amsterdam, a company we acquired in 2013. NRT is our optical sorting company, also an acquisition that we did based in Nashville that makes optical sensing. We look at material in the near-infrared range of light, identify what it is according to its molecular structure, and then select it. And Zero Waste is our organics company, where we design and build both anaerobic digestion and compost systems, all of which, though, are focused on a feedstock coming from municipal solid waste. So where you'll see other anaerobic digestion systems dealing with farms and manure and that sort of thing, that's really not our space. Rather, we're looking at the MSW stream. As I said, we have all kinds of systems. Many of these are, I know this is maybe too colorful, but it just shows the diversity of systems. Most of these are actually municipal solid waste systems, but we do things like plastic processing. The blue one in the bottom-right corner is a PET processing plant. The last five large-scale facilities making food-grade PET were designed and built by ourselves. A number of these are municipal systems. We also do single-stream and just a whole host of things, construction, demolition, waste, really anything related to the waste stream. I thought, again, it would be interesting when we talk about processing solid waste or recycling, most people don't really have a concept of what it is. If you've seen the systems that we have locally, you know that they're relatively simple, heavily reliant on people just manually picking material on a sort belt. And things have gone quite a bit further than that. So bear with me. This is about three and a half minutes long, but it'll give you a sense of how these things work. This is actually a system that we built, that's the 3D model, in Oakland, California. The first step is we reduce the material by size so it's consistent. This system's design is around 100 tons per hour, so it's very large. That wouldn't be needed here. But we go through a process of taking the material, using screens to separate it by size. There are different values in each type of material. A lot of the waste comes in bags. We have to make sure those bags are open. And so we go through that process. Some more screening. This is really where we're separating a lot of that organic fraction. Much of the food, when it comes to a facility, is really small in size, say, 2-inch minus. And so here, that stream you just saw has a very high organic content and suitable for something like anaerobic digestion. When you think about plastics and paper, things that are recyclable, as compared to textiles or shoes or bricks, we use density separation to separate those apart. And then we go through another process of separating the two-dimensional from a three-dimensional, the three-dimensional being bottles, containers that are sold into the marketplace. We do, film was mentioned earlier, plastic film, we use near-infrared to identify it and separate it out as a commodity product. And then the containers, we have a combination here of both near-infrared to determine PET versus HDP, polyethylene versus polypropylene, the different types. We also use AI to do a further delineation of that material. Much of this technology, by the way, I will tell you, is unique to us, something we've developed and now in the world. We're the only ones who have it. And that would also be true of robotic orders, where we were a first mover in the space. The robot is picking, but the identification is through a camera, looking at material, running it through a neural network, an artificial intelligence system, where we can then determine what it is that we see. And all of this is controlled. The system that you're looking at there has over 300 motors coming into a centralized control system, everything working collectively. Once we separate out the organic waste, we bring that over as a separate process, starting off with feed bunkers. We then, we want to be able to meter that material in in a very consistent way. We then take it into anaerobic digestion, where we have fluid and we're sealing that material and then creating a biogas rich in methane that we then can convert into renewable natural gas. And then the final solid product is a pathogen-free stabilized organic product. If we wanted to make compost to go into ag, we are doing that in locations. That's a very involved process because really all contaminants need to be removed. Or in this case, because we've stabilized it, because we've pulled the carbon out and we've really killed all of the pathogenic material, it could be used for other things like cover the landfill, road bedding, that sort of thing. So it has a lot of practical use even without that further processing. Those are all sort of options that we go through depending on the requirements of each project. So hopefully this gives you a bit of an idea of what all this looks like in practice. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eric to talk a little bit more about some of the specifics in our.
Well, thanks, Steve. It really is enjoyable to be here, to be able to talk about a system here at home. Steve said we go all over the world and talk about these things and work on these things. And so to be able to do it here is really, really quite enjoyable. And I've had a great time getting to know Jeff and Angie and understanding more about the system here in Lane County and how some of these things will fit. So, you know, you have a great consultant with HDR, know the people there well. And so we were able to interface with them as they were working through their studies to understand a little bit more about kind of the approach. And so I think we helped shape some of that as well. So, but just kind of give you an idea of the technical approach that we looked at and kind of following just a very, very basic flow chart. But really, the MSW coming in, and this is what would be going to Short Mountain, and we would propose to set up a facility there. You know, Jeff and I went out there and looked, and there is space that would stay way outside of the expansion areas to be able to site this. There is enough room. But the first step, as Steve was showing, is that we would really sort the material. So there's going to be things of value, recoverable, and, you know, those containers and all of that. We would take that out, and then the rest of it would be preparing that organic fraction of the material and, you know, pushing that towards storage bunkers and then into the AD system. I will say that, you know, on the recyclable side is that, you know, you know, we kind of targeted the material that HDR identified as being organic-rich as an AD project. But really, you can expand and look at this in terms of what's a value there. And I will also say is that when you do take recyclables out of the stream, there is also a carbon reduction and greenhouse gas reduction in that as well. So it's not just the anaerobic digestion that does generate those greenhouse gas emission reductions. But on the AD side, it's a pretty straightforward process. In the case of this kind of material, we're talking about a high solids. So in the world of AD, that just means as lower moisture content than, say, you know, a manure or something like that. So it's still wet, it's still got a lot of moisture in it. But the kind of systems you use is more in that high solids. We would use our SmartFirm system that's a plug-flow system, so you really are feeding it in. Steve showed a shot of it where inside, where you've got kind of paddles agitating the material. But basically, you put it in, it's in there for phenomenally 21 days, and you let biology do its thing. We accelerate it by using a number of different techniques to make sure it's very active. But you really are just using, you know, biochemical reaction to generate that biogas, which is going to be somewhere around 60% methane in the balance of, it's going to be CO2 and some other trace gases. That's a biogas. So you're taking that process that goes for 15-plus years in the landfill, and you're compressing it down to 21 days in a very controlled environment. That's really what you're doing. That gas coming out, it's easily clean to a transportation fuel or what we would call renewable natural gas. That's usually the highest and best value for biogas. We've done projects where we've made electricity from it, so similar to what, you know, EPUD is doing there at the landfill now with landfill gas. You could do that, but that's not really the highest and best value. And that doesn't yield the best, as I'll show you in a minute, the carbon emission reductions. The solids, as Steve indicated, it's at this point, because of the way we run the process, at the temperatures, we do kill all the pathogens, so it really is technically compost. And because we've taken all that carbon, not all, but almost all the carbon out in the form of methane and CO2, it really is quite stable, and so it can be used for a number of different applications. We'll go to the next slide, Steve. So as we look at Lane County, so, you know, again, we take that inbound stream of municipal solid waste. You know, I showed an optional addition of food waste. You know, it was interesting listening to the Climate Action Plan and food waste. And obviously, highest and best is to use the food for people, but you do have, you know, food waste. And what we've seen is that when you have these types of plants in place, a separate collection and a separate use of that food waste is perfect for these type of systems. So rather than going through all of that sorting, they would go directly into the anaerobic digestion. So it's just an optionality that is a great use if you can't use the food waste otherwise for human consumption. But the other part of this is it's really this focus on landfill diversion. And based on the numbers, you would clearly, by a project like this, hit your 63% diversion. And then, of course, the reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. I think, again, the Climate Action Plan showed a number of about 27,000 metric tons a year. I think the, the, again, the climate action plan showed a number of about twenty seven thousand metric tons a year. Uh, that's pretty much right in line. We, we saw about thirty thousand uh based on the calc we did for the project. So that is, uh, and that, that's a, that's a forever thing. That's every year. Just keep, you know, you just keep doing that, um, based on the, the numbers we saw. Um, and again, the sorting system recovers the valuable commodities, um, and uh sale for market, which also generates a, another greenhouse gas credit. Renewable natural gas is a recovery and in using it on a local transportation fleet, the, the way that's typically done is, is to inject the gas into a natural gas pipeline. And then it's technically available to anyone that's anywhere on that pipeline to use. So it's not like we have to go directly into a truck that's there, although you can, and we've done those systems very successfully. But you really just have to be able to inject it into a pipeline. Um, the gas that we make from an upgraded standpoint does match up. Um, it's actually much, it's actually much cleaner than natural gas in terms of methane. But it's really, um, just making sure that the, the trace gases it has are clean enough for, for the, uh, in this case for Northwest Natural. Um, and again, reuse of the, of the solids. Um, you know, when we look at the project, um, you know, and we see all this is, is that this is very much of the way we approach a very integrated project where you have, you know, receipt of, of the material mechanical processing, the biological process, all this material handling kind of one complete comprehensive system. And so that is something that we do uh from a turnkey standpoint and have done before. Um, and then we've also seen where these things are conducted in, you know, these public private partnerships, which I believe is kind of the approach the RFP is taking. Um, and obviously we, we do that as well. Um, you know, those always involve a, you know, much more interaction in terms of how the project is funded. But I will tell you, this is a very fundable project. Um, in terms of you have waste, you have a good site, uh, we have the ability to, to process the material and, and off take the uh renewable natural gas. So it's, it's uh, all systems go from that standpoint. Steve, next slide. So thinking about some of the outputs and, and, um, you know, I use the numbers that HDR had kind of sized up uh, in terms of the amount of municipal solid waste that was really high in organic content. I realize you have much more going to the landfill. So, um, I think right now you're right at about three hundred thousand tons total going to Short Mountain. Um, you, you could process all of that waste. That would not be an uncommon thing to, to try to approach and do. Um, but you know, you're, you still only have so much organic. Uh, and then the question becomes is, you know, what's the value in terms of how much more of the uh commodities of value we could take out and how much organic material is left? So, so we really kind of focused on the, the HDR study uh in that hundred and twenty thousand. But I, I want you to leave thinking that's the, that's the magic number. These are just numbers based upon, um, uh, data that's been gathered so far, the sizing of the plant be, be, be very straightforward. But when you use those kind of numbers, uh, you kind of get these kind of outputs. The, the first is, is, is I want to, you know, focus on this, this, this reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. Um, and we did run the, the model that, that the Oregon Clean Fuels Program has out there. Uh, we're very familiar with the model. We do it in other projects. It's a little bit different here in Oregon. Uh, but there's an, there's what we call a carbon intensity score. So this is really kind of evaluating a fuel in relationship to its intensity for every gallon used, how much emissions of carbon it's, it's, it's emitting. So all fuels are kind of rated in this way. So for instance, diesel is right at about a hundred. I think it's ninety eight and from a carbon intensity standpoint. Uh, compressed natural gas is, I believe, seventy seven, seventy eight, if it's not coming from a renewable source. So what's unique about these kind of projects and again, for, you know, for what it does from a greenhouse gas emission standpoint is actually gets a negative score. So you're, you're, you're really taking carbon out, right? So you're not just reducing if you're replacing, say, for instance, this renewable natural gas in a fleet from, you know, compressed natural gas. You're not only taking the compressed natural gas out, but you're also taking your, your, you've got a negative carbon intensity. And so we ran the models and depending on a couple of different things in the way the project is executed, it's right at about a minus eighty to minus one hundred of a carbon intensity score. That's a very good score. That's a very, very good score. And it shows how important, how impactful doing this kind of thing. It, it's very hard to do many other projects out there that have these kinds of numbers. The other, the other positive thing uh from a revenue stream standpoint is, is that, that there is a clean fuels program value. And right now, uh, that value is, is for every metric ton of, of CO2 equivalent that this program takes out is it's worth a hundred and twenty five dollars in that marketplace. Um, and so if you take that roughly thirty thousand tons a year, that's a revenue stream, right? That's not insignificant. That you get because you're using that renewable gas that way. There, there's also um, a federal program, uh, what they call RINs. Uh, this is kind of comparable to the ethanol markets and whatnot. In fact, the fuel is rated on an ethanol equivalent. Um, that's a, not as much money. Um, it's about a, you know, fourth of that. But um, that is also a very stable program that you qualify with the fuel on. So again, the, the criticality of it is, is, is producing this as a fuel, which we ought to do. Put it in a pipeline and have somebody using it. Um, and obviously you've got buses and all kinds of people that use compressed natural gas. And now they can use renewable natural gas. They don't see any difference. And all these environmental attributes that are, are, are claimed by the producer of the fuel. So that's the, the great notion. In terms of how much we think is out, is, is within this material, um, based on, you know, our preliminary analysis is, is it's about equivalent in terms of energy on a vehicle, about one point three million diesel gallon equivalents. So that's what we think that we've generated. That's a lot of, that's a lot of fuel. Um, and uh, you know, these, these systems run um, pretty much uh all day, uh, every day uh, and produce fuel and, and uh pump it into the system. We also see that there's value in the commodities. Um, and, um, you know, right now, uh, commodity values are quite high. Um, and so, uh, you know, and we would expect that based upon other processing systems that mix solid waste. We'd have somewhere around, you know, twenty to twenty five percent of that inbound volume being able to be recovered as a, as a commodity. So that's our, that's kind of how we look at the output. So there's some things besides just, you know, collecting uh fees for doing diversion. There are some new revenue streams and uh those revenue streams are, are significant. It will help without a doubt, you know, offset the, the costs of the capital operations and reduce down the, the fee for use. Uh, next slide, slides, Steve.
Great. Well, thank you. I'll, uh, pick up from here. Um, but where I, I, I think hopefully you have an overview of, of uh who we are and how we would conceive something like this. Uh, the, what you're describing is what we do. Uh, we do it in, in a variety of places. Uh, we're, uh, we could not be more excited about uh doing, really bringing all of these technologies here and uh deploying them and uh, and working through this uh process. Uh, this would be a, uh, obviously a showplace for us. Uh, and, and I think, uh, to the point for the county. Uh, we've, when you look around the state, uh, there really is, uh, uh, there's a lot of old technology, uh, frankly. Uh, even though the, you know, the good people at Metro and other places will claim leadership. There's really nothing much uh to show for it. Uh, and, and this is a, uh, uh, you know, listening to everything that, uh, that you're working on, you're really matching up the idea with the action. And, uh, and that's exciting. Uh, so we're, uh, we'd be delighted to participate anyway, uh, uh, you would like and, and continue to work through the process. So with that, happy to take, uh, questions.
Well, I want to thank everyone, including our staff, so much for this. Um, when I made this agenda request that the board consented to, it was to get a, an idea of a pragmatic vision of what could be um at this particular location. And I think you've more than done that. Commissioners, um, do you have any questions or comments after that presentation? Yes, Commissioner Buck and then Vice Chair Farr.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you everybody for their, uh, report. It's very exciting. Um, living in a, a household and family that talks about garbage all the time and how to get things out of the waste stream. Um, this is e- extremely promising and, um, certainly a movement in the right direction. Um, I, I think we had a failure years ago when we started co-mingling our recycling. And, um, then of course we get massive amounts of contamination. I know things would be so much more valuable in a tertiary market if they were clean streams. But we know that that's not always going to be possible. And although I'd really like us to continue that effort as well, um, there's clearly, uh, the largest stream, which is contaminated material. Um, what I, I have a couple of questions, which is uh, what kind of energy do you, do you use to run the facility? Since we're talking about, you know, taking uh greenhouse gas emissions and, um, turning them into something that we can fuel different kinds of fleet. So I'm very curious uh of that, uh, of that. I am actually quite happy to hear that there's an avenue forward with a potential facility where you don't have, um, you know, really low paying entry level jobs of people picking through garbage. Like that is, I, I can't imagine that kind of job is something that we as a board wo- would want to recommend in an overarching theme of, you know, this kind of green economy processing. We have wonderful uh, community based businesses, one of which is in Cottage Grove, that would love a clean, a clean stream of recycled plastic. Uh, and maybe that's something that we can do here in the future. Um, and the other question that I had, other than how you energize the facility, is um, kind of tangential to our goal of trying to no longer physically ship in a truck our leachate and being able to pipe that up. And is it contingent on that? Because that's kind of a long term effort. And I'm hoping this kind of effort would, uh, just maybe in a couple of years rather than, uh, years and years away. Thank you.
Great, great question. Well, Eric, do you want to, uh, do you want to speak about, uh, on the AD side and leachate, uh, question?
Uh, yeah, sure. So, uh, you know, obviously we, um, we try to make it as low a production of moisture or in, in fact, the system itself, based on the balance of the water is, is pretty much a non, um, non-discharge source. So, um, you know, you know, but it all does depend a little bit on the balance of material coming in. Typically with, um, MSW, uh, most of the year it's dry enough that we're adding moisture. So, so there's a recirculation with the system. We're adding moisture and sometimes looking for additional sources of moisture. So as a, for instance, uh, there'll be, um, within the industrial community, some liquid waste opportunities that we'll take in to use because those will basically also help produce gas and give us more water. So that's typically the approach. Um, with respect to the other question, Steve, you want me to address the power generation or usage?
Uh, sure.
So, so relative to that is, is that, um, we are generating a biogas. It can be used to uh generate electricity for self-generation for the plant operations. Uh, and that's the, that's the lowest carbon footprint you can get. So we would basically add that as the energy source to, um, produce electricity that then would run the plant. And because we can basically mix the two, um, you know, the, the gas, the, um, power generation doesn't need to be twenty four seven, even though we're producing gas twenty four seven. So we can basically run, uh, the conversion units to produce electricity. And we actually have a need for the heat as part of the process. So we use the, also the heat generation from that source as well. So that's, that's typically where you run the, the plant and that produces the lowest carbon footprint you can have for a facility like that.
And, and, and just to add to that, if you think about the organic side, uh, the parasitic load of is roughly around ten percent. So when we take that gas, produce power, uh, 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 we have, uh, uh, most of it to then sell back uh, into the grid as far as power. But, you know, we would only take the amount of gas needed to, to run the process. And then the, the rest would be pipeline. Or, uh, uh, cleaning and then injecting, you know, fueling trucks or, you know, whatever, whatever we're doing with it.
Thank, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dan.
Commissioner, to your question about the leachate pipeline, uh, this project would not be dependent upon that. Um, the landfill will still be producing leachate from the waste that's in there that we will have to handle. Um, hopefully, if we implemented a system like this, we would have less open area at the landfill, so to produce less leachate over time. And with the organics coming out of the waste stream, that would be less concentrated leachate, so easier for our waste treatment plant to treat.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Farr.
Thank you, Chair. I am, this is absolutely fascinating. I, I don't even want to talk. I want to listen because there are so many really, uh, riveting things that we're talking about. You know, first thing I'll say is that Americans are not known globally for their, uh, self-discipline or their lack of self-indulgence when it take, comes to consumption and also discarding things that shouldn't be discarded, throwing stuff away. You know, the reason we're not sending barbed load after barbed load, container after container of the, of recyclables overseas is because we were not disciplined in what we send. We send our garbage. We send our diapers, you know, we send our junk over there. Who wants that? So what intrigues me about that, Angie, I'm looking at you, your presentation contained at least six and probably more than that mentions of education. And in education, I trust that to mean that we're teaching me, me Pat Farr, how to be better at managing my weight, my own personal waste stream. And if we all get better at that, then the downstream effect is far less, uh, unmanageable. And ultimately we put, um, uh, Steve and Eric, we put you guys out of business because we're doing such a good job of managing our own waste. But we're not going to do that in the near future. Uh, so what that, uh, brings up to me is that, uh, earlier in the meeting, I was wringing my hands about how much manufacturer we've sent overseas. This is what a shining, such a shining example. It's not only happening in the United States. It's happening here in our own backyard. And when you mentioned, uh, I believe it was you, Eric, who said that this, that Eugene, Lane County could be a showcase for your product. Um, I'm, that turns me on and that makes me so very, very excited about what we could possibly do here. Because, uh, it is, uh, it really is contrary to, um, the, uh, self-indulgence that we engage in, in this country. And the, uh, lack of discipline that we engage in, in how we discard of the things that we should or should not discard. So, um, the, what makes that particularly important is we have our afternoon of climate uh related issues is looking at the one, uh, pie, that double pie chart. It's a good company slide that you showed, I believe it was from your presentation, Andy, that Angie, excuse me. That, and pardon me for calling you Angie. That's, uh, call me Pat. That shows that our waste management division is eighty four percent of our greenhouse gas emissions. If you take out the fourteen percent that seems to be, you know, the inherent in, in just managing a department. That's about seven, uh, roughly seventy percent of our, um, carbon emission comes from our landfill. Now here's an area that we have a great opportunity to really make a significant effect on how we, as Lane County, impact the atmosphere. And that's what makes me excited is because as we talk about, um, driving an electric car made of the components that are manufactured in the country that doesn't control their output. Um, you know, there are balances there. There are, there are issues that we have to deal with. And, and numerically, I don't know how long you have to drive a Tesla to overcome the, uh, the carbon output that, that plant that made it, that manufactured the parts in, you know. However, with the product that we're talking about today and the, the process that we're engaging in and, and double thumbs up to you, Chair Bernie, for bringing this to us. The, uh, it, it's just exciting that we're doing it with our own company, in our own backyard and a really truly shining example that we can demonstrate as Eric, was it you that said it's showcase? Or Steve, was it you that said that this could be a showcase for your entire company? So I'm pretty excited. Um, I don't have any questions because I think you're very thorough. I would love to, uh, make the journey to, uh, the Bay Area to see one of these, one of your systems in operation because I would love to watch that. I like watching green beans get pan canned. You know, that's exciting. At least imagine what this is going to be like. I'm really thrilled. Thank you.
Mr. Miller, Mr. Herbert, if you think that that kind of outburst from Vice Chair Farr is common, I assure you it's not. Are there any other commissioners that would like?
We'd be glad to show you those systems.
Commissioner Bozovic.
Thank you. And, you know, this is such exciting stuff. I remember when I was going through ag engineering back in the late seventies. You know, we were addressing some, you know, odd even days pumps and things like that. And one of the things we were doing is design questions, especially when we're dealing with non-antonium fluids and some thermodynamics and all that was, you know, manure slurries and, and going into anaerobic digesters and generating biogas back then, just from the, the farmsteads. Yeah. So I, I have a deep appreciation for the engineering it takes to get to this mixed waste systems. It's just so much you're dealing with. It's extremely impressive. And also as a small business owner, you know, out here in the country, I'm the one that, you know, empties the trash every week and collects the recycle. And even though it's, you know, our family households here and the businesses on our property, we have the smallest roll can that you can pick up once a week, but we put out two containers of recycling plus another container for our glass. So I, I, I also understand the education side because it seems like every time I get a new employee, it takes me about a month to get them trained. What they can't put in the trash and what they should put in, in, you know, the recycling, I should, should say. And, and then when, you know, we lost the plastic side, it was like retraining everybody all over again. So I've become kind of the recycling Nazi here locally. So I get that why Ms. Marzano's, you know, exhibits had education in just about every one of them. I have, so this is a great concept. I love the idea. I hope we can move forward, but I have one question because, you know, there's balances on the economics of a certain amount of, of, of daily or weekly or annual waste streams with certain percentages of various constituents generating enough economic value to make everything work. Has there been enough change? Cause I know there were some court cases, maybe 10 years ago or so about how people can divert and our ability to control the flow into our waste stream. You know, do we need to maybe ask legal counsel to take a look into flow control and what our ability is to make sure that, you know, if we build a multimillion dollar facility, people don't divert their waste to Coffin Butte, you know, or down into Douglas County. Or, you know, the organics start getting diverted to somebody decides to set up a biogas facility somewhere, you know, just south of Junction City. Yeah. So I, I'm just kind of, you know, what is our, 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 our ability as a solid waste utility basically for an entire county to control that flow to guarantee the ability to recover the cost of, of initial capital cost of this facility?
So right, right now we have our system benefit fee where a portion of the fees need to be paid if if entities take waste out of the county. And so that is sort of like waste flow control. But frankly, most of those agreements are outdated, would need to be renewed. If we went down this path and we did have that concern, first I would like to think that our communities would be in partnership and we have been talking with the, the cities throughout this process over the last few years to move to this point. But as far as could we as the solid waste authority implement flow control, I think that case law is actually fairly well settled that yes, we could. I would like to not do that regulatory arm, but if, if we needed to, to protect, protect our community wide investment into the system, that is an avenue.
That is my biggest question.
Yeah. Good. Okay, I apologize. You were through Commissioner Bozovic. I expect you to say for now. Yes, Commissioner Trigger.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, everyone, for this great presentation. I'll just add my enthusiasm and excitement. I remember when I was first considering running for the seat and meeting with Mr. Hurley over three years ago, we talked about the concept of this kind of facility and how exciting it would be. And I just want to say, you know, I'm thinking about, I can't remember if it was the late, great thinker Buckminster Fuller, who first coined that term when people talk about throwing things away. There is no away. Everything has to go somewhere. And I think this could be such a great combination opportunity to have this showcase facility in our community in doing such a, getting a little ahead of ourselves. But were we to go down that road, that would be one of the greatest educational opportunities for our community of all. Because we could talk about the, the why we're doing this facility and the how it works and what issues it will address. And that will just highlight and create some very literally graphic examples for the community of just how little, how much we are throwing away and how little, little actually goes away, that it goes somewhere. So I, I just think there's tremendous opportunity in this to hit on, to fire on so many different cylinders around our climate goals, around efficiency, around community education and around just doing, doing better right here in our own backyard. So thank you for the presentation. Really excited to see where it leads.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to the world I left behind when I retired, full of people exponentially smarter than I. Who had developed technologies that could be commercially available and financeable in various projects that are, that are entrepreneurially creating new wealth by addressing their business model to social problems that we need to address. So for me, it's a bit of deja vu. It's exciting. In all honesty, Mr. Herbert and Mr. Miller, to see the kind of enthusiasm generated by this board for something that's pragmatic, is business oriented and also most definitely relates to climate mitigation is, is really gratifying for me. This seems to be the type of thing that can bring diverse people together rather than divide them pro-business, anti-business, pro-this. Yes. So I really, I knew of no way to get that understanding of what could be in a relatively short period, really. We're not talking decades here. In Lane County, I want to share with commissioners. Steve, feel free to say I'm dead wrong, but I want to share with commissioners my take, which is that it's in the business interest of a company such as this to have a showcase. Oh, we'd love it. If I was them, I wouldn't want us to touch it. I would want to control all the variables. Because if I was bringing people from around the world to Lane County, to my corporate headquarters to generate business, I would want a Cadillac version of what I could do to show them. And I think that's the mutual interest that underlies any successful public private venture. And I think the components of those are what we see today. So having said that, are there any other commissioners that would like to make statements before? But then I'll just, Dan, Angie, Jeff, thank you all so much. Eric, Steve, thank you so much. I think this is really exciting and this is part of our aspirational future that we're all about. Thank you very much. We look forward to working.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Commissioners, it's, it's hard to be enthusiastic, but we have other items on our agenda. Item 12 is commissioners' business. I know that Ms. Jones mentioned this to me. I actually know that Commissioner Trigger mentioned to me. So we're, we wanted to have a discussion about, just a discussion about board committee assignments for 2022. And it is my pleasure to introduce the staff person that will discuss this with us, Diana Jones.
Have we met?
Well, Diana, you're always, you're always behind the scenes, but we're never hearing from you.
I'm still not going to be on camera. I don't have one to be on screen with, so. But I am going to bring my screen up and go ahead and take back over being presenter. So one second. I've got my gaze on the document up and where am I? And now I'm having bandwidth problems. Okay. Hopefully you guys, are you seeing myself? Would help if I show my screen. It's, it's thinking about it. There we go. Okay, our first order of business is looking at the representatives for 2022. I'm assuming you can see on my screen the current list of who's on what committees. And this is our time to maybe discuss who would like to, if you'd like to stay on the committee or who else would like to serve on the committee. So Chair Bernie, I was thinking we would just go down the list and discuss each committee and I'll fill it in from there. This is not a vote. This will come back on consent calendar at the first meeting of the year on January 4th. So our first committee is Poverty and Homelessness Board. And we currently have Commissioner Farr and Commissioner Trigger as the alternate on that. And the kind of discussion is, is if you guys want to leave it as is, we can just move on. If you, if there's someone else who wants to serve on it and have discussion, we can discuss that at this point.
Anyone?
I'm pretty cool as is.
This is one, the subject I love, but I'm so low on the totem pole. Okay, on there and I know that Pat's done a great job. So I'm fine with that. Lori? Give me, I forget, we're still in session. Yes, Commissioner Trigger.
You know, the alternate, I mean, we, we talked about it last year, just because it is an, an issue area of interest. And as I understand it, that's not a formal designation. And of course, anyone can tune into the meeting. So if that were something, Commissioner Bernie, that you were interested in sort of being named on that, that's, that's a position that I'm very flexible on. It's obviously a topic area of interest and I'm happy to stay there, but it's not, as I understand it, sort of a formal designation.
Thank you, Commissioner. I've done so much work in my life around that, that I am absolutely happy to have Vice Chair Farr and you on there representing this body.
Did we leave as, as trigger alternate?
Yeah, I, I've heard no one, no, just, no reason why not.
Chair Bernie, what I'm going to do is just run down them and if hands come up for discussion, unfortunately, because I'm in the document, I can't see the camera. So I'll let you call for people as raise their hand. Performance, it's currently Commissioner Farr. Do we have, does anyone have a desire to serve on that or make any changes?
I see no one.
Okay. The next one is Public Safety Coordinating Council, currently served by Commissioner Bozovic. Any changes to that one?
Anyone? I think Commissioner Bozovic raised his hand. He might have a change here.
I was putting my thumb up. I'm good with staying on that.
We're good with having you there, sir. Okay.
These, we have the Housing Policy Board with Commissioner Bernie and Commissioner Farr is the alternate.
I would like to say that I have tried my best to make that more than a Eugene centric focus and I've not been successful. So I feel that a Eugene, a commissioner that represents, that has Eugene within their area would be more appropriate for that.
I have a question, two, two-part question. One is when do those meetings occur? And then two, it would seem logical to me, but obviously Commissioner Farr should speak for himself. If he's been the alternate, that he'd become the rep. And then if there's an alternate position pending the schedule of those meetings, that might be something I'm interested in.
I can tell you those meetings thus far are the first Monday of the month at noon. They're usually held at the atrium building. Back when we met in person on the top floor in the conference room, I don't know how granular you want to get. And, and Commissioner Farr, correct me, but what, but my experience is that most of the nonprofit low income housing groups from, from homes to goods, St. Vincent de Paul, Cornerstone, it's are on there as ex officio members and the body tends to make rev recommendations to the Eugene City Council.
Yeah, Chair Bernie, I was first on the Housing Policy Board in 1995 and it was a little bit different back then. There was more of a robust discussion among the board. It's changed a little bit since then. And although the, the two rotating chairs are still the same, by the way, Norton and John continue to be the leadership on that. I think it's, I think it is legitimate, it's worthwhile. It has a great deal of potential. And in that the nonprofits all do participate, it really is a good forum.
I would say, Commissioner, the only update is that Isaac Judd is, Norton has passed and Isaac Judd is now the chair. But yes. So.
So am I hearing to try for Farr and then with Trigger as the alternate?
Is there an alternate position formally or is that just something we've designated to have coverage there? Do, do we need to name an alternate? Because there are chairs and vice chairs of these committees that don't relate to our liaison positions necessarily.
I, I was Commissioner Sorensen's alternate and he frequently did not attend the meetings. So I quite often sat at the table during that period of time. So the alternate was a viable position.
I think the alternate is a viable position, Commissioner. And, and there've been, my initial half year of meetings, Commissioner Farr was there, even though he was the alternate.
And often have a, or I'm asked to participate in the discussion, which I would anticipate for the, for you as alternate also, Lori Trigger, that you know, your, your insight, I mean, it's a shame to relegate people to an audience when they have contributions to make.
But I'm, I'm happy to serve as the alternate and particularly since Commissioner Farr and I have no trouble communicating about, you know, if we're going to be absent or filling one another in on what we missed or so if that's a position that this group would like to, to keep as an alternate designation, I'm happy to fill that. Particularly if it is largely relates to a lot of city Eugene housing.
Okay.
Okay. How about we kind of, in the interest of time, I, we just look at all the multi-jurisdictional committees. Can everybody see my screen and what's up there for multi-jurisdictional?
Or mine.
Are there any of those that someone else wishes, that someone wishes to not serve on anymore or someone else would like to serve on that best or should we leave that, though the remaining multi-jurisdictional jurisdictional committees as?
Any changes? Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Chair. So as I'm looking through this particular group of information, the Lane Act has gone through a major restrategizing process with ODOT. And, you know, I'm I'm on a lot of transportation committees as it is and I'm totally open to sharing that with another commissioner if they'd like. And depending on Chair, your interest, your continued interest in regional solutions. They're, they're doing a lot of work in McKenzie area. And, and if you felt that there was a change you'd want to do, I am an alternate though. So you know. And, and if you felt that there was a change you'd want to do, I am an alternate though, so, you know. I can always, you know, come to a meeting as well, but I haven't done that so far.
So let's, let's do this one at a time. What was the first one, Commissioner?
First one is Lane Area Commission on Transportation, otherwise known as the Lane Act.
And are, do you want to stay? Are you suggesting now's the time for transition?
I'm open to that unless, unless nobody else is interested, in which case I'll just stay on.
Is anyone else interested in serving on Lane Act for this body?
Okay, I guess I'm in.
Yeah, I can speak to regional solutions. Here's the problem. Regional Solutions met today at 1 o'clock. They meet days that we have board meetings. So we could have any board member here and we would be precluded from those meetings. I'm very comfortable, A, keeping it the same because, because they're supposed to, whether they do or not, they're supposed to look at. A variety of things, including this last one we just looked at, right? Waste handling and as a regional thing, but I also. Commissioner Buck, I'm going to suggest if we can get them to move away from, which I've been trying, to from Tuesday afternoons. I would encourage you to join me at all of those meetings.
Understandable. Thank you.
So rather than you be the alternate, we'll both just, we'll just be both be on it representing the county. Does that work?
Sure. It's unfortunate that they're on our board meeting days.
Oh, you should have seen the last email I sent to that regard. Okay, okay, Diana.
So for multi-jurisdictional committees, the only proposed change for the order that will be coming will be. Commissioner Farr for Housing Policy Board with Commissioner Trigger as serving as the alternate.
Correct.
Moving on to other appointed committees. You can see that list of those committees on your screen. Does anyone have any changes they would like to discuss with any of those committees?
I'm sorry, I'm getting.
I, I do.
I'm sorry, now I just can see faces. Please, whoever said I do, go.
That, that was me. And, you know, I'm going to say this out loud and I've said it out loud a lot of times, MPC is something I am highly interested in. I was on that committee for a long, long time and, and the decision was made to take me off that committee. I'd like to be on that committee. That being said, Travel Lane County is also a committee that I love being on, love the interaction, love the, love the work that it does. And Chair Bernie, I know that you love Travel Lane County also, and I'm absolutely prepared to say, Chair Bernie, you want to switch places?
Yeah.
You go to the regular member and I'll, I'll be the alternate.
You know, at this, at this point in time, this is terrible. Could I make you a deal, Vice Chair Farr? I was going to say, for the purposes of continuity, for me, just in terms of boning up and gearing up. I'm going to request one more year as, as is, and if I'm fortunate enough to continue serving as Commissioner. I would love to make that switch the following year, if that would be okay, but that's my only reasons for it.
That is. And it's good, once again, as the alternate, you can attend any meeting you wish to attend and you will be included as a part of the roundtable.
Thank, thank you very much. And I understand. Yeah.
Vice Chair Farr, you also want to discuss MPC?
Yeah. Historically, it had been two metropolitan members, since it's Eugene Springfield and Coburg basically are the MPC. And once again. My wishes were not granted the last three years. My wishes are that I would be on the MPC.
Do we, do, I don't know how we go about that. I hear it a lot. I thought we just.
Let's not continue that discussion at this meeting. How's that sound? Discussion surrounding that.
And we can continue.
Just for clarification, the next time you see this item, it will be on consent calendar with these names populated. So of course you can pull it off the consent and have further discussion, but. Whatever we put in now is what will show up for your vote on consent.
And I am fine with that process, Chair and Diana.
Okay. Okay, so.
Diane, this is honestly at least giving us a chance to talk, which we haven't had before decisions were made. I'll never forget my first meeting. I'm sure you remember Commissioner Buck. It was this helter-skelter. I didn't even know what all these groups were. Bang, all these things were happening. So this, this, just thank you Diana for the discussion. It also gives us a chance. To see where people are and maybe there will be time for further discussion between meetings. Sorry.
Okay. So what I'm hearing right now is no change right now to other appointed committees. And then we'll move for the last of our representatives, we'll move to standing committees. Does anyone want to discuss any changes or anything to the standing committees as they are now?
I have a question. Because I can't move the screen, so I can't see where, I saw the Community Health Council. And now I'm not seeing it and I don't remember what category that's in. Did I miss it?
That's on mandated committees on the next page.
I haven't got to it yet. Thank you.
Yeah, those are going to be liaison.
Great, thank you.
Any changes to facilities or financing audit or legislative policies and procedures or technology?
I have not attended one policy and procedure meeting. I know that Commissioner Farr and I are on there. And so I have no problem stepping off of that for someone that could, whose attendance would be better than mine.
As, as, as staff person for policies and procedures, Chair Bernie. I can tell you, you haven't attended because we have not had a meeting. This COVID hasn't been a need for policies and procedures in recent. In the past year.
Okay. That aspect of guilt on my conscience has now gone away.
It looks like your buddy wants to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I would just say that, you know, most of these committees meet fairly periodically. Not, not a ton. Our Finance and Audit Committee. You know, meets basically just when there's actual stuff to come forward eventually to the board. So it's not every single month. And although I very much find that the items on that committee interesting. I'm open to anybody else who might be interested on that committee.
It's a wonderful committee.
It's a committee of three people. It's the smallest board I've ever been on.
Well, I envy you, Commissioner. I think Commissioner Bozovic will tell you that the facilities committee that he and I are on. Every month, monthly, they're meeting and we're going through stuff. So that's a bigger time commitment. I don't see anyone responding.
I'm hearing no changes to standing committees. Is that correct?
Commissioner Buck, you don't look entirely satisfied there.
No, I'm fine. I'm totally fine with that. It's, it's, it's not a committee that eats up a ton of time. I just wanted to let people know I'm open to it.
Okay.
Okay, we will move on to liaison. Let me get my liaison sheet out for a moment. You should be seeing that now. Okay, so these are 2021, 2022 liaison. We can start, I'll make this a little bit larger. We'll start with the mandated committee. We have the CHC and the Mental Health Advisory Local Alcohol and Drug Planning Committee. Any changes to either of those?
So I have really enjoyed being on the CHC, on the Community Health Council. I've learned a lot. I've met some great folks. Unfortunately, toward the end of the year, I took on another Tuesday evening obligation that's going to carry forward into next calendar year. So I always read the minutes afterwards and check in. And of course, we're in a transition with the director of the community health center, so was checking in regularly with the standing director. But if there is someone else who's interested in those meetings, they are a really great bridge between. The community who's using a service and us as Lane County delivering a service. And I'm really sorry that I now have a scheduling conflict, but it would be really hard for me to stay as the liaison.
I spent seven years as that liaison and be thrilled to step back into that role. I love that committee. I mean, the people there, I mean, you hear people who just know exactly what they need and they're not afraid to tell you. Now, in exchange, Commissioner Trigger, we have the Public Health Advisory Committee, which meets in the afternoon, not in the evening, so we can flip our roles on those two committees.
I'd be happy to do that if there isn't someone else on the board who's also interested in the Public Health Advisory.
That is also a great, you know, because you were on it, as I recall.
Commissioner, 2022 liaison for CHC. Moving to Ad hoc Committee for the Courthouse Stakeholder Liaison, we have Bozovic and Bernie. Do we have any changes for that one?
Commissioner Bozovic, I was just covering a sneeze and it looked like you were going to talk.
No, I just can't think of any reason and I. Know how active that committee will be over the next year.
I concur.
So we get status quo for now?
Yeah.
Okay, moving to mandate special committees and boards. Any changes there? I'm not hearing anyone, so let's move to non-mandated.
I'm sorry, Diana, it's just that I was letting you know, nobody, nothing. You're not hearing it.
Thank you. Non-mandated committee. We did just have a discussion with Commissioner Farr and Trigger about the Public Health Advisory Committee. So any additional discussion on any of those items, including the Public Health Advisory Committee? So I'm, so I will put Commissioner Trigger down as the new representative, new liaison for that committee in 2022. And then we have. Watershed Councils. Any changes there?
I will say this about Long Tom, Commissioner Trigger, the Amazon Creek, of course, is Long Tom Watershed. It's where you live. It flows right next to my house. So be careful how you manage that, please.
They've had some great virtual presentations for their meetings. I've been able to attend a few of those this year and they've done a really great job in this. Virtual environment of keeping folks engaged and bringing in some really excellent presenters.
Okay, I'm not hearing much change on Watershed Council, so that brings me to the end of our list. So I don't know, Chair Bernie, if there's any further discussion. If not. I will go ahead and get these orders prepared and you'll see them again on January 4th.
Okay, and you may find that someone wants to take them out of consent. We'll see. With that, we are now on item 12B. Do commissioners, any commissioners have any announcements? Seeing none. We are, we are now on item 12C. Are there any future board assignment requests? Seeing none. Mr. Mokr Heisky, I believe it's time for review of assignments, if any.
Mr. Mokr, Mr. Mokr Heisky had to leave the meeting and he asked me to review assignments, which at this time there are none.
How come he gets to leave the meeting?
He had to go to.
Okay. I believe we have no executive session, correct, Diana?
Correct.
So I want to remind everyone that tomorrow at noon, we have a joint work session. Between the Board of County Commissioners and the Eugene City Council at noon. And until then, we are now adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Chair Bernie?
Too late.
I could, sorry, if I could just remind everyone for that work session, that will be an invitation from Eugene, a Zoom invitation. So if you're looking for your invitation, please look for the Zoom invite.
Thank you. Thank you, sorry. Bye-bye.